Call to order the May 18th meeting of the Cary Town Council. As you may notice, we are missing one council member. Councilmember Jennifer Robinson is not here this evening. She is on vacation with her family. At this time, I'll recognize Councilmember Eads for our ceremonial opening.
Thank you, Mayor. May is Historic Preservation Month, and I have the honor of being our council liaison to both the Historic Preservation Commission, along with the Friends of Page Walker. Historic preservation is more than just saving old buildings. It's about honoring our past, celebrating our present, and safeguarding our future. This month allows us to celebrate and appreciate the risk, history, and cultural heritage of our community, and raise awareness of the importance of preserving our history and taking pride in our past. I'd like to thank our Historic Preservation Commission and Planning Committee for working hard to prioritize Cary's history through preservation of structures while also working to educate our community about the importance of preserving for future generations. I'd also like to thank the Friends of Page Walker and their advocacy and education to our community, and the creation of a community that is centered around history. And encourage anyone interested to check out the town's Historic Month page to see the remaining activities we have planned for this month in ways that you can get involved. This month also marks AAPI Heritage Month. This designation was made in 1992 and honors the many contributions, accomplishments, legacies, and tradition of Asian-Americans, Pacific Islanders, and Native Hawaiians. It also celebrates two historic moments in our country's history, including the arrival of the first Japanese immigrants to the United States on May 7th, 1843, and the contributions of Chinese workers on the transcontinental railroad, which was completed just prior to Cary's founding on May 10th, 1869. I also want to remind everyone that Memorial Day is approaching later this month, and I hope that you can join us for the Memorial Day celebration at Hillcrest Cemetery on the 29th, as we recognize all those who paid the ultimate price in service to this country. And lastly, and possibly most importantly, I want to recognize our very own Mayor Protem Don France, who's celebrating a birthday today. Happy birthday, Don! And with that, please join me in standing for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You had me worried. I was like, what'd I do?
Happy birthday, Don. Thanks, Mr. Eads.
Mr. Mayor, real quick. On Veterans' Day, the Hillcrest Cemetery is in the morning and sponsored by American Legion Post 67, but the town celebration is at Veterans Freedom Park, I believe, at 1:00. Is that correct? Yeah. So it's all online, and we encourage you to come out and support our veterans. Thank you.
Thank you. The first order of business is to adopt the agenda. I would entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to recognitions, reports, and presentations, and I'll call on our town manager, Sean Stiegl, for his update.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Wake Med Soccer Park is expected to draw a considerable number of visitors over the next couple of weeks by hosting two major tournaments. First, the NCAA Division One Women's Lacrosse Championship is coming south for the first time ever. The semifinals are scheduled for May 26th, with the finals scheduled for May 28th. Currently, attendance is exceeding organizer expectations. In addition to lacrosse, you may have heard some buzz. The Cary Soccer Tournament, known as TST, is coming to Cary. The attention to the tournament was elevated following a tweet by Ryan Reynolds announcing that his football club, Rexum AFC, will be participating. The soccer tournament will take place June 1st to the 4th, with games being played simultaneously during different sessions, both day and night. With multiple games at once, Wake Med will be a festival atmosphere with lots of fun in store for attendees. If you can't make it there in person, both tournaments will be broadcast nationally on either ESPN, Peacock, or affiliate stations. And finally, in addition to these first-time events, Wheels on Academy is back for its 10th season in downtown Cary. Be sure to stop by this Saturday to enjoy the entertainment, food, fun, and some great cars. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Stiegl. Now's the time for our Public Speaks Out. We've included instructions for speaking at this forum online and on the printed agenda. There were three opportunities to participate in Public Speaks Out through written comments, calling in, or being here tonight in person. If you are here in person and would like to speak, I would ask that you take a seat in the rows to my right that are reserved for you to speak. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes each for their comments, and you may speak on any topic, as long as it's not a public hearing, and that's to your benefit, because public hearing speakers get five minutes instead of three for their comments. The three-minute time limit will be enforced, trying to be fair, not to be rude, and there is a timer on the podium. It'll start off with a green light. When it turns yellow, that means we have 30 seconds remaining, and when it turns flashing red, that's the point. I'll interrupt you, again, not trying to be rude or mean, but trying to be fair to all of our speakers. I thank everyone in the audience for understanding that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud, make remarks from your seats, or anything else that may distract from the meeting. So now is the time for Public Speaks Out, and I'm going to call on the clerk to read any written comments and call on any registered speakers.
Yes, so we had seven written comments submitted for Public Speaks Out. Brittany Goldsmith shared her concern about the growing population of copperhead snakes in Loch Mir. She suggested a campaign to thin out the population or provide inexpensive resources to help protect the kids who are playing in yards. Amanda Benson requested an open and honest conversation with council about things that she opposes. She shares that she stays involved to keep Cary a welcoming community and ensure green space is valued. She encourages council to listen to the citizens rather than focusing on developments that do not meet the needs of the community. Charlene Jones requested council speak with the Wake County Library System to have a covering installed over the open breezeway, which connects the parking garage to the library. She shared examples of challenges of being exposed to weather conditions when exiting the library, especially with small children. Richard Carroll submitted comments on the planned development of the East Cary Forest, located at 921 Southeast Mainard. He encouraged council to use the tree advisory committee recommendations and the carbon reduction recommendations as guidance when considering altering the last block of forest left in East Cary. He provided examples of how the plan will be effective. He also recommended this development may be better suited to be built on the Cary Town Center Mall site. Melinda Murphy submitted comments about how the recent initiative of several enormous construction projects is overwhelming. She encouraged the transformation move slower and described it as too quickly, too much too quickly. She expressed her opposition to the pictures in the redevelopment of the Town Hall campus and asked multiple questions about the request for qualifications. Chelsea Ralston submitted her concerns about the proposed redevelopment of Cary Town Hall area and included a list of areas that she would like to see addressed, including traffic and negative impact on affordable housing and small businesses. Marty B. requested the Town Hall Development Plan be paused. She listed multiple reasons of why she submitted her request, including concerns about traffic, safety, and encouraged the town to get in front of this with transparency and communication. Those were our written comments. Our first in-person registered speaker is Charles Yates.
My name is Charles Yates. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and Town Council members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening as the newly-formed LGBTQIA+ organization, nonprofit charity, Pride of Cary. Cary is a wonderful community, in part because of its diversity. We welcome new people, new ideas, new businesses, and new experiences. Even better, we accept and encourage them. We celebrate these differences with various cultural festivals throughout the years: Diwali, Ritmo Lutino, MLK Dream Fest Weekend, and many more. Since moving to Cary five years ago with my husband, I have been part of this community, enjoying these celebrations of other cultures, and wanting to find a place as well for myself. We have fostered valuable friendships and an inclusive faith organization here where we work and live. We've experienced that the town of Cary supports its residents. Cary shows up. I've seen this over the past few months as this organization has developed. Churches, local businesses, and our 150-plus and growing members have provided financial, brick-and-mortar, and volunteer support to help us develop programming and resources for the upcoming year. Partners with Apex Pride, Out Raleigh Pride, Hope for Teens, and the LGBT Center of Raleigh, as well as others, have reached out in support and to offer guidance. Our first event was on March 30th of this year for Trans Day of Visibility with our partners at Greenwood Forest Baptist Church, and it was a great success. This summer, we will be joining with other organizations to represent Cary at several local Pride events. We invite you to come to those events, as well as our own. For Pride Month, we will be having an anti-bullying forum on June 23rd. On October 15th, for LGBT History Month, we will be hosting our first annual Pride of Cary picnic. We are currently developing a gaming tournament and a senior community outreach opportunity, and we are invested in the P-Flag history of the Zomball House. As you can see, our mission and vision are to unite the people of Cary to celebrate and support the visibility of the LGBTQIA+ community through education, social events, advocacy, and activism. We envision Cary to be a safe, welcoming, and affirming community where LGBTQIA+ people thrive. It is our hope that Pride of Cary will continue developing into a valuable resource as our town continues to grow and become more diverse. Thank you for your time and consideration this evening. We look forward to working with you in the future for all the citizens of Cary.
Thank you.
Our next registered speaker is Holly Atkins.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. My name is Holly Atkins, and I am the founder and president of Hope for Teens. We are the only anti-bullying organization in Wake County dedicated to the support and advocacy of our LGBTQ+ youth that was founded in 2010. We wanted to be the first to welcome Pride of Cary to Wake County, and we look forward to future collaborations. What we have found over the past 13 years is that we provide a crucial support system for teens that are made to feel like outcasts or otherwise unimportant to any conversation. We provide that support because our elected officials do not. We have attended four different high schools in Cary alone, and all have said the same thing. The LGBTQ+ community is not only ignored by the school system, but also those elected who ran on platforms of diversity, inclusion, and advocacy. Not one council member has attended a GSA meeting in the schools, nor have any events been planned to celebrate these wonderful, talented individuals. So we have filled that void, and we are holding the first-ever Wake County Queer Prom for high school students. It will be on June 2nd, the first of many celebrations for Pride Month, which is June. We invite you to assist in chaperoning this event and showing your support for a family of students that deserve to be celebrated. Pride of Cary is a brand-new group, but their unwavering dedication for acceptance and inclusion has meant that some have already committed services or volunteered to chaperone. If you're interested in chaperoning to see why this prom was so necessary, please look for us on Instagram and click on the chaperone link. Or please feel free to reach out for a meaningful conversation on why we choose to support these teens. So in closing, to quote Macklemore, "If you preach hate at the service, those words aren't anointed, and that holy water that you soak in is then poisoned. When everyone else is more comfortable remaining voiceless rather than fighting for humans that have had their rights stolen, I may not be the same, but that's not important." No freedom till we're equal. Damn right, I support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next registered speaker is Christine Duque.
Hello, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and esteemed Town Council members. I am Christine Duque at 108 Chessington Court in Cary, and tonight I ask you to join our newly-formed nonprofit Pride of Cary in making our town a more welcoming place in which LGBTQIA+ people thrive. As vice chair of Pride of Cary, I'm blown away by the significant financial and volunteer support we've seen from our community in just five short months. We've gotten to know parents of transgender kids, lesbian couples who moved here very recently, gay couples who've been here for many years, allies who were born and raised here, and everyone in between. I moved here with my family in 1994, and I've always felt so safe in Cary and have felt so grateful because of all the opportunities I and my family have had, because I call Cary home. But when I told my parents I was bisexual at 18, they surprised me by being not immediately supportive of me. As we worked through their concerns, I realized I always, I had parents who worried, and they worried for my safety. That was their primary concern. And as I searched for places where I belonged, I realized I always found that belonging away from home. After college, I volunteered on the LGBT helpline, taking calls from people struggling with families who turned them away. Through my ongoing volunteer work, I went on to help found the LGBT Center of Raleigh in 2010. We didn't have any nonprofits serving people like me in Cary. And then for the next 11 years, I attended educational and advocacy events for the LGBTQIA+ community throughout the Triangle. I couldn't find anything like that in Cary either. In 2021, I heard that the town of Apex had a hugely-successful Pride celebration, which I then attended with my family in June of 2022. Pride is blossoming all around us with celebrations in Morrisville and Fuquay Varina as well. Pride of Cary is greatly needed and long overdue. It's time for Cary's Town Council and government to recognize that many LGBTQIA+ people and allies live and work here. We must be represented and celebrated, and we must create safe spaces for LGBTQIA+ people in Cary, especially as legislation proposed and increasingly passed at the local, state, and national levels threatens our lives and livelihoods. I invite each of you to work with us to educate our community at large about how to support our LGBTQIA+ neighbors and help us come together in joyful celebration at an annual Town of Cary Pride event. Thank you so much for your time. We hope to hear from each of you very soon.
Thank you.
Our last registered speaker is Jerry Meyer.
Say the name again.
Jerry Meyer.
Jerry Meyer, are you here? Okay, go to the next speaker. That was the last one?
That was the last one.
So that's all those that have registered. If you're here and would like to speak this evening and you haven't registered, now's the time to come forward. Anyone else to speak at Public Speaks Out? Can you move to your left, please? Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Mary Collins, and I live at 211 Howland Avenue. And the reason I'm here this evening is because over the last two weeks, sort of formed an informal Facebook group, in part in response to the fact that there was a large group centered in Cary that didn't seem to want to facilitate even civil conversations about anything in town that might be of concern to us. And since we don't have a newspaper or any other place where we can do that, we sort of turned to social media. And in that period of time, we have 99 people who have asked to join, and we've been having civil conversations. So I've sort of got a list of topics that we've been thinking about that I wanted to share with you. And by the way, the last time I spoke to the council was right before the proclamation for the Ivy Ellington House, and I'm just delighted to see that that move has happened, and thank you for that. So the first concern that we had is the idea of stewardship and transparency around Town Hall land development process. When we get information through the media initially, WRAL, other news reports kind of hinting at the fact that something's going to happen or it might happen, and then we do a little more research, find out that actually the process is probably quite a bit further along than we thought. And that just feels as though we're not being included as citizens in the process, and it isn't particularly transparent. We're also really for affordable housing in significant ways. And part of affordable housing that it seems is being missed is the retention of the longstanding, decades-long, affordable housing that exists in Cary. There are a lot of families that have lived here for generations. Some families have a middle-aged person caring for elders in the same home that they grew up in. And with the increased values of properties in town, property taxes are going up, we end up in a situation in which for that person to remain in Cary, particularly if they're on a fixed income, is difficult. So we'd really like to see more programs that address the fact that people who've been here a long time and contributed to the town are important and need to have some support in staying where they are. Traffic seems to be a big concern of a lot of people. They're feeling unsafe on the roads and unsafe as a pedestrian. A lot of issues about getting in and out of the library parking garage and some of the places where there's kind of a bottleneck. And certainly, everybody understands that there is construction and things going on that won't be in the future, but it sounds as though the intention is to limit traffic downtown, and we have long-term plans for mass transit, but in the short run, there's just a lot of harrowing experiences happening out there among drivers and pedestrians.
Ms. Collins, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
But if you have comments, we would love to read them.
Okay.
If you could pass them to the town clerk or email them later.
Sure. I'll email them later. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. My name is Nancy Haywood, and I have the pleasure of saying I was actually born and raised in Cary. I wonder if any of you could say that. After college, I married my husband, and I actually left the area. I went to Albemarle, North Carolina. If you don't know where that is, it's in Stanley County. After having our children, we did make the decision, however, to move back to Cary. We did this so our children could have the same upbringing I did, so they could grow up in an environment of inclusion. My two boys are extremely fortunate to live in Cary, or what I like to call "the bubble", where people are kind, caring, and very understanding. Where we were living before, a group like the Pride of Cary would have been met with very mixed emotions by its town council. Events put on by the group would have been met with hostility and extremely closed minds. For this, I am thankful for the current Cary council members and the support I know we will receive from you all. And I'd like to welcome you all to come to our meetings and to our events. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council, and community members. My name is Riley, and I was raised in Cary for 12 years, and I'm graduating Cary High School this coming year, and I've loved it. Cary has made such a loving community, and I'm so excited to be a part of Pride of Cary and everything we will do as we spread kindness, positivity, and inclusion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Going once, going twice, last call. All right, that'll be it for Public Speaks Out. Before we move on, there's been an item that's been misrepresented, and it's probably our fault, and that's the RFQ. I don't think we communicated that very well, and I think the media sensationalized that very well. So there's a lot of misunderstanding. I want to make it very clear, that is not a plan. All that is, is say, "We're interested in hearing from developers." So we haven't started. We don't know what's going to be there. Personally, I come and say, "I'm going to fight to make sure Page Walker is there, that that's not harmed. I'm going to fight to see if we can get a pedestrian bridge." But that's just me, because we don't have a plan. We're just asking for people that are in the development community to show us a plan. Now, once we choose a developer and they come up with ideas, then we want to hear from everyone in the public. I mean, everyone. If you have an idea and a thought, we want to hear it. And that's how we make our best decisions, is when we hear from the public on a controversial issue, which shouldn't be controversial, by the way, because we want to make it a win-win for everybody. But again, I just bring that up because as we speak right now, a group of people at Glen Air are meeting on this topic, very upset about it, wanted me to show up and talk about it, and I couldn't be there. So there's a lot of people getting a lot of misinformation and a lot of misunderstanding about what's going on at this time about the RFQ. So having said that, and since I started this mess, I'll open up my council if they had anything to add, but then I'll just move on. All right, good. We're now at, sorry for the interlude there. We're now at the Consent Agenda, which is item four, if you're following along. For the benefit of people watching our meeting on TV, I'm going to take a moment to review the Consent Agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all of these items. On the Consent Agenda, we have adjustment to the adopted meeting schedule. Call for public hearing for 23A01, Carford Point, Phase 3 annexation. Act 27PRC, our master plan amendments, leverage state funding to build bike-ped facilities adjacent to NC DOT projects. 22REZ22, which is at 107 West Park Street, and Statement of Consistency. I would invite council members now to let me know if they like any of these items. Pull for discussion. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
There's a motion?
Second.
And the second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and we now move to public hearings. Same rules apply for public hearings that apply for Public Speaks Out with one change. Speakers now have five minutes each for their comments. Our first public hearing is the fiscal year 2024 Proposed Budget. Financial analyst-manager Mike Franks will present this item, and we will open the public hearing after his comments. Mr. Franks, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council. I'm excited to be here tonight for the first of two public hearings on the FY 2024 Recommended Budget. An overview of the budget was presented to Town Council at the quarterly meeting on May 11th. Council received a copy of the budget on the 11th, and the budget was posted on the town's website. Budget has also been advertised on social media. Today, we are holding the first of two public hearings, with the second occurring on June 8th. The budget is scheduled to be adopted on June 22nd. The total town budget is $523.8 million, with the primary focus being to maintain and enhance existing services. The budget also includes investments in priority areas like housing, public safety, parks, stormwater, and the environment. The budget also funds several critical staffing needs and invests in infrastructure and maintenance. Here's a summary of the town's total budget. The largest portion of the budget is the general fund, which funds Cary's core services such as police, fire, public works, and finance. The FY 2024 budget maintains a tax rate of .34, which is equivalent to $3.4 million. The solid waste fee remains at $22 per month with a cost-recovery rate of 96%. A 3% increase in utility rates has been included to cover items such as chemicals, which are required to operate the utility. This would increase the monthly tax bill for an average family of four by $2. This would increase the monthly tax bill for an average family of four by $2.57. Budget is available through a variety of ways, on social media. People can also contact through email, through voicemail, through Public Speaks Out, as well as the additional public hearing that we'll have on June 8th. There are two additional key dates for the FY 2024 budget. The second public hearing will be held on June 8th, and the budget is scheduled to be adopted on June 22nd. With that, we'll open up the floor to questions and discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Franks. So now it's time for the public hearing. I'm going to call on the clerk to read any comments and call on any registered speakers.
We had no written comments. We did have one registered speaker, David Shouse.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protim, counselor, manager, an attorney, and dedicated staff. My name is David Shouse. I served on the Downtown Stormwater Working Group some years ago. Went to the Cary School of Government, as it used to be known, and I'm now doing graduate work on the Environmental Advisory Board. I am a homeowner in Riverwalk, which is part of the Kildare Farm II HOA. I am not here speaking at the direction of the Board of Directors or the HOA, but as a private citizen. You may be aware that there's a scenic lake in the Kildare Farm subdivision that's been there for 30-something years, 40 years, and it is fed by three streams, one under two creeks and two under Lake Pine. We have some sedimentation issues that have been ongoing for 20 or 30 years. The sediment is not generated primarily in the HOA, but is fed by the streams obviously upstream. We appreciate, I appreciate that the town is being very proactive on infrastructure. I wanted to speak specifically to an item in the budget for the culvert replacement, one of the two culvert replacements on Lake Pine. We have, I have understood that those replacements were in the works for some time, spoken with staff about it, and I feel fairly well-educated. I simply wanted to bring that particular project to your attention in the budget so that we could explore any opportunities to address upstream sedimentation. You may be aware the Higgins Greenway was a stream restoration project many years ago. As I used to tell neighbors of projects that I manage, it always looks worse before it looks better. And it looks great now, it's doing a great job. But I do understand that from lakefront owners, that the Higgins Greenway restoration did generate a lot of silt, and that silt ends up being a problem for the 1,100 owners of the Kildare Farm HOA. It's been dredged once, it'll probably need to be dredged again, but it's a Herculean task to take something like that on. So we're simply looking for the opportunity, potentially, to collaborate in design considerations. We have some of the top design stormwater folks at NC State and in some local homegrown engineering firms here in Cary that could be consulted, and potentially partnerships and funding on a project. If we're going to replace culverts, again, unnecessary work, this would be the time to consider a very holistic, larger, long-term potential solution for sediment. I understand that the staff plans a public meeting in the next month. I, as a participant in public meetings for many years, I know that that's not necessarily the best environment to discuss very specific issues. I'm sure traffic will be an issue. But simply wanted to bring the item to your attention. And lastly, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to applaud your clarification on the RFQ versus RFP and bid process. I think it's a challenge for all of us to communicate long-term development issues and make sure that the general public understands that staff has their best interest at heart. So I appreciate your doing that and appreciate all your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shouse. And Mr. Steagall, can we get somebody to contact Mr. Shouse?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
No additional registered speakers.
If you're here and would like to speak on the 2024 proposed budget, now's the time for you to approach the podium. Anyone to speak on the budget? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions or comments. Okay, this is the first of two public hearings. We'll see another one at our next meeting, June 8th. Thank you, Mr. Franks. Our next public hearing is item 5.2, which is 22REZO2 Duke Health at Green Level Destination Center PDP. Chief Development Officer Scott Berry will introduce this item. Council will not take action on this item tonight, but instead, it's going to be referred to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation, and will return to us in a few months. Mr. Berry?
Hey, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm pleased to be here tonight to help present exciting changes to an important portion of the Green Level Destination Center. Specifically, tonight's rezoning request by Duke Health is focused on their desire to construct an important pillar to the community, a hospital and medical campus. As you can imagine, based on the size of the staff report, there are a lot of details to work through of a request this size. So tonight, I've asked both Rob and Katie to help with the presentation. I'll walk through a few project highlights. Rob will provide the details behind the plan, and then Katie will provide the analysis of the plan in accordance with Imagine Cary. Following our presentation, Dr. Monte Brown is here, representing Duke Health, and will provide the applicant's comments. Before we get into the highlights, though, I want to mention the land exchange that is in the staff report. Duke Health has identified land owned by the town of Cary that, due to topography, is ideal for their stormwater facility. This property is shown in blue on the map. It is separated from Thomas Brooks Park by a stream buffer, so is unlikely to become part of a future park development. Staff from both Duke and Cary have already worked on a proposal where Cary would exchange this land for a trailhead on the northern part of the site and land along the White Oak Creek Greenway on the southern portion of the site, which is shown in green on the maps. We mentioned this in the staff report for your information, but your consideration and approval of the land exchange would occur at a future meeting. As with many large, complex projects, it's taken years of work to be where we are today. Duke's vision of a medical campus, including a hospital and emergency department, started to become a reality in 2019, when the current rezoning was approved. In 2020, Duke opened a new building and began to think of their next phase of the project. Through many hours of conversation with staff, it became clear that in order for Duke to fulfill their vision, updates to the rezoning needed to occur. So last year, Duke filed another rezoning case, and at the same time, submitted a development plan for a 100-bed hospital and an emergency department. During these, during this, in parallel, has led Duke, their consultants, and staff to a much better understanding of how rezoning conditions will impact their future development plans. After many months of conversation, we are here today to have the public hearing. But of course, this is really just the start of this public hearing, and as the mayor mentioned, you know, this is the public hearing today, but it will also go to the Planning and Zoning Board, and then finally come back to you for a decision. As we all know, this site's located in a destination center. Our Imagine Cary Community Plan states that destination centers should contain some of the more denser forms of housing, retail, and office use in Cary. The Imagine Cary Community Plan has more detailed language for the Green Level Special Planning Area, which recommends office, commercial, residential, and, important here, a focus on employment-oriented uses. Vertical and horizontal mixing of uses is encouraged, and building heights would range from four to seven stories. Structured parking is also encouraged with a highly walkable environment and an active public realm. And while we know that a hospital isn't a guarantee at this site, we wanted to take a broader look at where other hospitals were located in the triangle. The map illustrates the hospitals in the area, the largest three, Wake Med, Duke University, and UC Chapel Hill, are our Level One trauma centers and serve the primary anchors for the region, with other smaller hospitals providing more localized care throughout the triangle. If the rezoning is approved, this site would provide the opportunity for a larger hospital to be constructed in Western Cary with the ability to efficiently and effectively serve citizens in Western Cary, Research Triangle, and portions of Chatham County. The rezoning request has three key new features that build upon the overall community need. A larger hospital offers more office space and helps create the foundation for a significant employment center, a key community plan objective. There are new sustainability commitments, like EV charging and green roofs. And revised street cross-sections on the northern portion of the development now include separated bike lanes. And with most rezoning cases, there are a few key items that we are still discussing, and I've summarized these into three categories: walkability, transportation coordination, and design standards. For walkability, it's really important to be able to walk around a site, not just in urban development, but it's also something discussed in the Imagine Cary Community Plan. We continue to be in discussions with the applicant regarding how to balance good site layout with the design needs of a large medical campus. One of the ways this was achieved in the current zoning was through a pedestrian corridor, which was envisioned to create a north-south pedestrian network through the site. The current condition requires that when sidewalks are utilized as part of this network, they shall be a minimum of 10 feet wide. The proposed zoning removes the 10-foot-wide minimum width for sidewalks, creating the potential for only a 5-foot sidewalk, which, in our opinion, reduces the functionality of the corridor. The second item we are still discussing with the applicant is related to transportation. This rezoning request was primarily focused on the northern portion of the site, where the hospital use was going to occur. Due to this focus, and for simplicity, minimum changes to the rezoning south of Green Level West are proposed. Staff agreed with this approach. However, as you'll hear from Rob, we have concerns about connectivity between adjacent developments. Additionally, there is one off-site improvement that Duke's no longer offering. This condition should remain as part of the rezoning. And the final layer of discussion centers around design standards. As with any unique use, there can be times when the town's LDO would not allow the desired outcomes of the property owner. In this case, the property owner is asking for modifications related to signage, architecture, and streetscape. And overall, we remain excited about the proposal, but we want to continue discussions with the applicant. And at this time, I'll ask Rob to come up.
Thanks, Scott. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Scott has shared, Duke Health is proposing to rezone their site on Green Level West Road to accommodate a larger hospital campus. The expanded 81-acre site is located on the west side of NC 540, about a mile and a quarter from NC 55 and about a half a mile from Green Level Church Road. The site is bisected by Green Level West Road, and approximately 50 acres of the site are on the north side of the road, while the other 31 acres are on the south side. Duke Health's site is next to two other active rezonings, both of which are adjacent to the west. On the south side of the road, Viretus, which held a public hearing in April, is proposing a vertically-integrated mixed-use development focusing primarily on residential uses on their 31-acre site. On the north side of the road, Belcanto is proposing a development that is predominantly multifamily housing on their 35-acre site. Belcanto is still being reviewed by staff and is not yet ready for a public hearing. Staff is also administratively reviewing a by-right development plan for new stuff station on land that Duke Energy owns northeast of the Duke Health site. The existing Duke Health site is currently zoned Mixed Use District, or MXD, as shown here in blue. The additional land that Duke would like to add is Zone Residential 40, which is shown here inside the yellow boundary in brown. The applicant's proposing to amend the existing MXD zoning and associated preliminary development plan, or PDP, to expand their boundaries to include additional land to the north and west. The existing mixed-use overlay district boundary would also expand to include the additional land. The site is currently located in and would remain located in the Jordan Lake Watershed Protection Overlay District. I will now provide an overview of the details associated with the case. The current Duke Health zoning was approved in September of 2019 and encompasses 70 acres. The PDP delineates six development pods on the north side of Green Level West Road and seven pods on the south side. These are laid out in a grid-like manner, using proposed streets and streams as delineating features. The PDP also includes eight modifications to the town's land development ordinance. The currently approved land uses include a hospital, office, medical office, commercial, residential, hospitality, and I should point out that the residential uses are limited to the southern portion of the site. Since receiving its original zoning approval, Duke Health has constructed the first phase of the project. Duke Health's proposed rezoning creates a larger hospital campus through additional land and increased density. The rezoning also proposes several changes to the PDP. The most visible change with this rezoning occurs north of Green Level West Road. The approved six-pod grid-like layout, shown here on the left, is proposed to be replaced with revised design on the right, consisting of three pods and fewer street segments. This significantly increases the size of Pod 3, where the hospital use is located. While this change would accommodate a larger hospital footprint, it also increases block lengths and decreases the likelihood of street-level interaction. Regarding the land south of Green Level West Road, other than renumbering the pods, because there are now fewer pods to the north, and tweaking a few land uses, there are no significant changes proposed. So recognizing that the proposed rezoning is not making significant changes on the southern portion of the site, this table summarizes the development program increases on the northern portion of the site, which include an increase from 100 to 500 hospital beds, an additional 200,000 square feet of office, with the amount of allowed medical office growing by 350,000 square feet, and a 7,000-square-foot daycare. On the north side of the road, the minimum building heights for several of the existing pods are increasing. Pod 1 is raising the height to a minimum of three stories. Pod 2 increases the minimum height to three stories, although it's worth noting that it's already been developed with a four-story building. And Pod 3, which consolidates three former pods, is now proposed to have a uniform three-story minimum and 10-story maximum height. As far as the south side of Green Level West Road, the presently approved building heights remain unchanged. The current zoning includes a condition that a minimum of 5,000 square feet of commercial will be vertically-integrated on the north side of Green Level West Road, somewhere in Pods 1 through 5, which are shown here in the yellow circle on the left. Based on Pod 2 having been developed with medical office and the vision for the expanded hospital campus in Pod 3, the vertical integration commitment has been consolidated to Pod 1 in the proposed PDP. This area is shown in purple to reflect this commitment. As far as the south side of Green Level West Road, there are no changes. The rezoning would remove the following land uses from the current entitlement for the entire development: townhouses, colleges, schools, shopping centers, and it would add the following public utility facility, non-governmental utility, major utility facility, and oxygen farm. It's important to note that these new additional uses are only allowed in Pod 3. Finally, the proposed rezoning adds the ability for one-story retail kiosk to be located in Pods 1 and 4, which have a minimum building height of three stories. Kiosks are permitted if they're adjacent to community gathering spaces and do not exceed 3,500 square feet each. While the concept of a limited amount of one-story retail could serve to help activate the community gathering space that they're adjacent to, there is currently no limit on the number of such kiosks or how much of each pod they may occupy. This lack of specificity could undermine the indicated three-story minimum building height for these two pods. The PDP continues to include the existing commitment to provide a 10-foot-by-10-foot pedestrian tunnel under Green Level West Road. This is an important part of the north-south pedestrian corridor that Scott mentioned earlier. The applicant remains committed to provide traffic improvements at three off-site intersections. We note that the existing zoning also contains an additional commitment to construct an off-site road improvement that includes a 14-foot-wide second westbound-through lane for at least 1,200 feet west of the intersection of Street A and Green Level West Road. Both the town and NC DOT believe this improvement was necessary to accommodate traffic as vehicles merge down to a single lane west of Street A. This improvement actually spans Belcanto's frontage and a little bit of the road corridor west of their frontage. This improvement is no longer included in the proposed rezoning. This improvement is no longer included in the proposed rezoning. The current zoning has four-foot painted bike lanes for the primary streets in the development. The zoning proposes to upgrade the painted bike lanes on Street D and H to be two-way separated bike lanes. The streets will continue to have 5-foot sidewalks on both sides. The intersection of Street A and Green Level West Road is the first signalized full-movement intersection west of NC 540, and it will serve as the main entrance into the northern part of the site. The existing PDP includes a basic collector-street cross-section for Street A that has four-foot-wide painted outside bike lanes and five-foot-wide sidewalks. The proposed Duke Health rezoning updates Street A to include separated bike lanes on each side of the street with four-and-a-half-foot-wide planting strips and five-foot-wide sidewalks. For the portion of the site south of Green Level West Road, Duke Health is not proposing any changes to the street layout or the street cross-sections. As Scott mentioned, connectivity between sites will be integral to achieving successful and safe access and circulation in the destination center. For example, Street D in the northern part of the development and Street E in the southern part are essential for facilitating east-west movement within the destination center. While Street D is proposed to be upgraded from painted bike lanes to separated bike lanes, no changes are proposed to Street E on the southern portion of the site. Street E remains a standard collector-street with painted four-foot bike lanes. Meanwhile, the adjacent Veritas rezoning has evolved to the point where it is proposing a larger street cross-section for Street E. Staff is concerned that these differences will be problematic at the time of development plan review if these rezonings are approved as proposed. To encourage environmentally sustainable site design, the PDP includes an updated commitment to incorporate green infrastructure techniques. Duke Health has also proposed the following new commitments: An active roof garden, including small-plant landscaping, an arbor or shade structure and/or seating, shall be provided in both Pods 1 and 3. EV charging infrastructure shall be provided for 2% of the parking spaces that build out for all pods north of Green Level West Road. The project shall achieve a 3% reduction in total peak-building system loads. And LED fixtures shall be provided on all exterior site lighting. There are several unchanged items that are proposed to carry forward. These items include providing 40,000 square feet of community gathering space, which is eight times the amount required by the LDO. Commitments regarding structured parking and parking deck screening also remain unchanged. There is also an approved modification to allow an administrative parking reduction of up to 30% for the site, the normal limits 15%. The zoning proposes to continue allowing grading in the Green Level West Road streetscape with a commitment to plant 3-inch-caliber replacement trees, which is 50% larger than our current standards. The zoning would continue to include reduced streetscapes for internal streets to create a more urban feel. Retaining walls that are visible from Green Level West Road continue to be limited to 6 feet in height, while stormwater ponds would continue to have the ability to increase retaining wall height from 6 to 10 feet as long as the walls are not visible from a public street and are decorative in appearance. The number of alternative standards, or LDO modifications, that the applicant is requesting are increasing from 8 to 22. These include removing the perimeter buffer requirements, allowing up to an 8-foot Duke Energy easement within the Green Level West Road streetscape if the currently above-ground line is placed underground as anticipated, allowing bioretention measures in the streetscape, allowing nine instead of three champion trees to be removed, removing the foundation planting requirement where building facades contain a covered patient drop-off, and clarifying that sidewalks are only required on one side of private streets. 10 of the modifications being requested are related to our sign ordinance. These requests include increasing the number and options for colors, increasing the types of illumination that are allowed, and modifying the rules for four different types of signs. The request also seeks flexibility regarding logos, increasing the maximum area of a sign that can be a logo from 20% to 75%. In addition, the applicant's seeking to allow more than one logo per sign. The logo changes in particular concern staff because we are not able to regulate sign content. Finally, the applicant's requesting two modifications to the town's community appearance manual. The first request is an exemption from Cary's architectural requirements for temporary hospital facades where future expansion is planned. These will be for facades that face north and east and are not visible from a public street. The second architectural modification would reduce the transparency requirements for any utility facility in Pod 3, reducing the ground-level requirement by 20% and reducing the upper-level requirement by 10%. This concludes my overview of the existing and proposed rezoning. And now Katie will present staff's preliminary analysis of the proposal.
Thank you, Rob. Good evening, Council. Next, we will cover staff's preliminary analysis of the rezoning with the Imagine Cary Community Plan. The revised rezoning conforms to the special planning area's recommendation that the destination center should include employment, commercial, and higher-density housing using multi-story buildings, and that a significant portion of the site should be dedicated to office and other employment uses. During our analysis, staff not only analyzed Duke Health proposals but the two other cases within the Green Level Destination Center. If each development is approved and were to build out to the maximum permitted uses, the developments cumulatively would be considered consistent with the Cary Community Plan's guidance for the Green Level Destination Center. We do note that the Veritas and Belcanto proposals are not yet approved and may change before reaching Council for final action. When we look at the live chapter, we know that the number of residential units remains the same as which was previously approved in 2019. However, townhomes have been removed. We also note that a significant number of residential proposals have been submitted on uses adjacent to this property. The previously-approved rezoning from 2019 also did not include a commitment to affordable or workforce housing. The current proposal remains the same. The site will tie into two greenway corridors: the White Oak Creek Greenway along the southern portion of the site and the future Bachelor Branch Greenway corridor, which will extend across the northwestern corner of the site. A street-side trail is also proposed along the southern frontage of Green Level West Road, which will provide east-west connectivity with an extension of a street-side trail on a proposed adjacent site to the west. The proposed changes to the north-south continuous pedestrian way through the site, as well as a reduction of sidewalk dimensions and locations, will lessen the site's ability to conform to the Engage policies. The updated cross-sections in the northern side further the site's multimodal street design policies from the Move chapter. However, as noted, the inconsistencies with the cross-section on the southern portion of the site are concerning as they tie into the Veritas site to the west. Policies from the Shape chapter point to a development that provides a mix of uses. We note that while the site is providing limited vertical mixed uses, instead it's focusing on providing a larger pod to facilitate the development of a hospital. And when looking at adjacent proposed development, there is a potential for horizontal mixing of uses. The strong commitment to providing employment generators with this site helps to advance policies from the Work chapter. Both the Shape chapter and the Work chapter also focus on quality and attractive appearance. The lack of specific detail requested and the modifications to Cary Standards and the Community Appearance Manual reduces the commitment to aesthetics and architectural requirements and overall design of the site. Additionally, regarding the sign modifications, the increase to the size and the number of logo options is not appropriate for the site, and staff believes that all application requests could be explored to provide a better balance of logo area to sign area. Duke Health's rezoning request addresses certain policies from the Serve chapter, including commitments to two activated roof gardens in Pods 1 and 3. Other commitments include EV charging infrastructure to be installed in Pods 1 through 3 for a total of 2% of the parking spaces to include EV charging stations. The applicant has proposed LED light fixtures on the site, and the site will also include energy reduction techniques. As part of stormwater requirements, the applicant has committed to using GSI as part of the site's stormwater management program. Regarding the modification for bioretention, staff notes that bioretention is an important component of their application and directly addresses compliance with Cary Community Plan. However, attractive and mature streetscapes are also important to the plan's objectives. Given the streetscape buffer widths have already been reduced by 50%, adding this function in an already-limited space could present challenges upon design and installation. For the public hearing tonight, mailed notification has been sent to property owners within 800 feet of the subject site that exceeds both the state and the LDO requirements. A neighborhood meeting was held on March 9 of 2022, and six residents attended. Concerns and questions expressed at that meeting included questions about phasing, questions around the process and mitigation for traffic impacts, questions around what's permitted under the current rezoning entitlement, questions about the need for site expansion, also preservation of the White Oak area. And there was also questions about building heights, uses, and road connections. Since the public hearing has been noticed for tonight, staff has not received any calls or emails regarding this proposal. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Scott.
You see why I needed some friends to help. So in summary, Council, overall, this rezoning request adds key new features that build upon our overall community need. They include a larger hospital, more office, more sustainability commitments, and more robust street cross-sections on the northern portion of the site. As we mentioned, there are some site details to resolve, and we look forward to continued discussions with Duke Health. And I'm appreciative that we're at this stage in the process and one step closer to a potential Duke Hospital in Western Cary. So with that, I would like to ask Dr. Monte Brown to come up and give the applicant's comments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to thank you, but I want to really thank your families for allowing you to serve the way you do. I know what that means. It's a large commitment of both you and your family. I second want to point out that I do have rec-sum tickets already for both UNC and for the Cary. And that we hope, after all of this, the big picture, that we actually have a Duke Hospital by the World University Games that was actually announced. I was part of the bid committee and hope to be part of the steering committee. But Cary's been a big part of that. I'd like to say that actually this journey started back in 2017 when we bought the property. And for those of you who don't know, actually, the design of a hospital is more specific than your LDO. So this was the book that changed from 2016 to 2020, excuse me, 2018, and now we're on to 2022. So what I told you we had to build is a building. There are now 60 new pages of requirements to build a hospital. So it just tells you the specificity of which we can give today. So my goal here to do today is that, since a lot of you have seen this in the past, is to give you an update of what we've done since there, to paint the big picture. And I failed in one of my mentor's admissions in the past. If you can't do it in five slides, you failed. I gave you six. And so I'm sorry we couldn't do it in five. So my goal other day is to reconfirm that the council actually anticipates this huge employment base as a major energizing part of the community plan, that recognizing that the town does not have an LDO that's specific to a hospital and that hospitals have specific safety and requirements, that the council is willing to consider the application in whole and that there are trade-offs that have to be made in order to bring this to fruition. That you support the planning director's original agreement that we were focused only on the north side. We actually did not plan to rezone, even though we bought the new property. We were forced into this because of interpretation of the central utility plant, which is where emergency generators and things like that. I never envisioned that when you approved a zoning of a hospital, that it did not include the infrastructure that's needed to run a hospital. But it was interpreted that we needed this specific thing that you saw on the slides, the utilities related to that, were then later determined to be a major utility. That's the reason why we're before you and why we did not then spend any time and effort on the southern part of the property. Our goal is to get that 100-bed hospital underway, but we also took the time to then design what it could be in the future. Our still original goal is that 100-bed, and that's where we planned, and that's what we've put the PDP in. That application actually has then led us to very specifics as to what then needs to be in the overall zoning so that we can meet it. And I've got some drawings there to show you. And we'd like to actually signal support that I think some of the things that have been said here today may minimize our Duke's commitment to the sustainability. So when people say that their comment that we were committed to LED on outside lightings, that's actually part of dark skies. That's a minor component of our commitment. So dark skies is you point all the light down so the birds and the animals don't get confused at night. All of our lights throughout these buildings, including my office, got relamped today, are LED lights. The outside lighting is just a small component. But the big component we want to talk to you about is part of this is the commitment to the stormwater, which we want to be a state-of-the-art. We want to be the hospital that everybody looks to as how to do a sustainable campus, not just a hospital. So if you look at your first slide, and I'm sorry that we're told no slides. I'm used to using a pointer. You'll actually notice there's been a big change since the original community plan. The Duke Energy property is actually 38 acres, which is now off the table for development. That 38 acres to the top right goes off the screen here to the right, and it will be gated right at that cul-de-sac there. So that will be a dead-end, non-public space. And we now own the purple piece that's on their land. And that front piece of that is non-developable as well. So I wanted to point out that the whole idea of how this might envision the future is very limited now because they are building a substation, which they promised me will be built before we actually do a hospital. The second slide in your deck is actually our vision, and this is not just artist rendering. This is actually the image at which we are actually in the process of deep design of a hospital. And in here, you'll note that we've tried to keep a motif. It's not a Duke campus, but it has some features of Duke. But you'll see in the foreground that what we're talking about in green infrastructure, which is just words, this is different. We'd like to actually not have our gargantuan stormwater pond where that's all it is. This is using the state-of-the-art, where you would actually take the water off the roof and all the places and actually let it percolate into the soil at the place that it was actually generated and make those into amenities. So I actually think this enhances the aesthetics of this campus, as you see in this drawing, and creates pocket parks and green spaces where people throughout the site. We did put in here, yes, we would like to not put plants right next to the hospital underneath an awning because it won't grow, and it creates issues where then people put smoking and all the rest. But in the rest of the area, this will be the greenest hospital you've ever seen. How that then plays out is on the next page, which is, sorry for all the diagrams, but all of these, sorry, for all the green infrastructure are these ponds. And these all have to be interconnected because of the topography of the soil. So it's a very complicated, complex thing, which actually, quite frankly, is adding cost to us, but we think is the right thing to do for our planet. That creates issues of why this Pod 3 is actually all aggregated together in that not only would we prefer that these not just be, quote, "private roads", we'd like it to be private utilities. At Duke, we're used to be able to manage the utilities because with your current regulations under the LDO, if it's a private road and then it's town easement for sewer, we can't go underneath it. There are complications of this whole thing. And we've been managing utilities for almost 100 years at Duke. So we're looking to how we actually get through these with the town to actually allow these type of cross easements or us owning the utilities to get this type of infrastructure in place. And you will see this at Duke in some small areas, but even this is beyond what we've done on major campus presentations. So this is when we say green infrastructure, this is the extent at which we're talking about. The next slide just gives you the same thing, that we can use these green infrastructure to create benches where people sit. It's not just a nice place to look at. It begins to create places of placemaking. The very detailed slide actually is actually then shows you all of the utilities and all of the different areas of easements of these private roads. But the main one I want to point out here is in the top right, you see a street-like structure going around to the back. This is the road where people have actually caused the most consternation. Duke Energy is back there. It's a back-of-house facility. To me, this is a loading dock entrance, not a road. And in fact, that's the only place that I know of that does not have sidewalks on both sides of the street. So we are planning, where there are public walking, there will be sidewalks. But we don't want people back here for safety reasons, near a loading dock and near oxygen tanks. We will actually gate it, if we are allowed to, to keep. We will actually gate it, if we are allowed to, to keep security. Security is the number one thing of why employees don't stay in healthcare. We want to create a safe environment. We are now unfortunately having to put weapons detection systems in our hospitals, and all of them are now installed. So we can't put public restaurants in those same buildings while we have to do metal detections. And on the middle of the page on the right, it says central utility plant. We call it CUP. That's the, that's the one building that we're asking for a change in the quote transparency, how much glass. We don't want people knowing exactly what's in there and making it a target, and it is from a safety if there's an issue with it. But it will still look better than half the buildings that you see around. It will still look good. We will still landscape it, but it is a unique building. It is housing only a few people to actually run the utilities of a cooling tower for the centralized air conditioning to this. And there was actually deep discussion about, did it need to be there? Well, it's actually where the utilities come in, the furthest from the hospital. There are good studies, and we have perfect definitions of data that show that the further from the hospital, the safer it is because of bacteria and not getting into our intakes. So we have planned this to a great detail, and those are the type of things that we're trying to bring to this campus is evidence-based design. The last, which wasn't given to you, is actually our overall mobility plan. So the red in these areas is actually what I would call the freeways of the pedestrian-bike pathway. So because this is a pod of, we don't want people actually going through that don't have business in it, we've created a way to the west and to the north. And we, as you heard, we did the separated bike pathways on access A. But on our PDP, not every single one of these yellow pathways, which are pedestrian. So rather than one big thoroughfare, we've created small, more intimate pathways throughout the property to create those respite where our employees only get a few minutes in between their breaks. They could go and get a little bit of respite. They don't have time to go to the south side and get a lunch or a dinner during their shift. They usually eat in the hospital, but want a few minutes outside. So we think that we've actually provided a pedestrian-friendly and bike-friendly, but without having them go through the congestion of where everybody's going to be looking for the ambulance entrance or looking for where their loved one to be picked up. We provided people how to get there if they need to get there, but a way around there. And this gets the town that park entrance that they really want to get at. And I guess with that, I'll entertain questions.
We normally don't do questions, but if we have questions in the end, we'll certainly call you up.
Okay.
All right. So now it's time for the public hearing for 2022 REZO2 Duke Health, and I'll call on the clerk to read any written comments or call on any registered speakers.
No written comments and no registered speakers.
Now it's time, if you're in the audience and would like to speak at this public hearing, I would invite you to the podium. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Going to open it up my colleagues, but I just want to make my comments first. I appreciate Dr. Brown and all the detail and the trouble and everything they've gone through. I also appreciate the staff. While he was speaking, I was thinking of the expertise of our staff. In case you don't know, we were ranked number one government in the United States. So we have the best of the best. So we have two bests working together. And I think if you continue talking and continue working together, we're going to get something that's pretty incredible. And I'm excited to see where that goes. So please keep working with staff. They are the best of the best, and we'll come up with something great. And I'll open it up to my colleagues for thoughts, comments, questions.
I have a couple of questions, Mayor. Mr. Wilson, I just wanted to confirm, as part of this proposal, the pedestrian bridge that's, or I'm sorry, the tunnel that's going to go under Green Level West Road that was originally proposed is going to remain?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, great. And then also, I believe as part of this rezoning, there's a request to reduce the minimum office by a total of 100,000 square feet and also increase the maximum. Is that right?
Yes, the range, the minimum and the maximum both move. You are correct.
Okay. One of the new conditions that was offered is around bio-retention and streetscapes. And I've mentioned at the last rezoning request to the south of this that it's, I think it's great that applicants are adding green stormwater infrastructure. My concern and question, though, is around co-locating that in a streetscape. I'm just wondering if you can kind of speak to how both a green stormwater feature and a streetscape will kind of work being in the same geographic location?
There are challenges. You know, both have important functions and are important in their own ways. There are specific plant material that you need in bio-retention, a certain amount of sunlight, a certain amount of air that those things need to get. If you have a lot of trees, which our streetscapes do include trees, you might not be able to get quite the right mix. Also, the media that's in a bio-retention area can occasionally need maintenance, and that could mean that plants get damaged, trees get damaged, or perhaps have to be removed. And there are often easements associated with our stormwater features. We, LDO doesn't allow easements and buffers, so we have some conflicts there, and thus that's why they're asking for the alternative standard.
Gotcha. So one of the limiting factors there, and one of the things I really like about the streetscapes in Cary are the mature trees. You know, you have a streetscape that comes in 10, 15 years from now, you have a nice mature tree. So I think what you're saying is by also including this bio-retention, there's a chance that those trees would have to be removed and replanted then if you were going to try to maintenance that feature. Is that correct?
That is a concern.
Okay. And then my last question is, how many beds has the state approved in this hospital to date?
Our understanding is 40? Yes, I have confirmation from the applicant, 40.
And are there any plans in the works currently to increase that number?
That'd be a question we'll let the applicant come down and answer.
Yeah. And I guess really where my question is stemming is just the timing around. So there's an increase from 100 to 500 beds. I'm just kind of wondering what the timing would look like on that, given that a lot of that's obviously going to be regulated by the state.
I wish I knew. See, all the CON issues that have even propped up today, we don't know how long that will take. But there are, in the last couple of years, there's been about 60 beds a year offered in the county, Wake County, because of the growth. And so we got 18 beds for Raleigh Hospital awarded to us just last week.
Okay.
So there's going to be a cumulative thing.
Okay. Thanks for confirming that. So I do have a couple comments regarding this. Overall, I really love the idea that we're expanding the hospital. I really think that the Duke Hospital is a great feature in this destination center. I do have a couple concerns regarding some of the changes to conditions, though. The first one is, as staff mentioned, the possibility of unlimited one-story retail kiosks kind of just floating all over the place, I think is really not going to look good. I know the applicant is proposing some of those to be vertically integrated, but I'd really look to the applicant to either increase the number that are vertically integrated or just put a limit on the number of kind of free-floating one-story retail kiosks. Also, I don't really care for the removal of the traffic mitigation item. One of the things that I've heard a lot of with these rezonings in this destination center in particular is the potential for traffic, mainly along Green Level West Road. And I think that just the removal of a mitigation option is just going to make things that much worse. And given that residents are already very concerned with traffic, I kind of see that as going in the wrong direction there. I'm also disappointed in the changes being proposed to the pedestrian corridor, specifically removing or limiting the sidewalk from 10 feet to 5 feet. One of the key features about this being a mixed-youth center and a really highly intense mixed-youth center is walkability. I think that that's one of the key features and one of the things we get from mixed-youth centers. And I think by limiting the sidewalk widths is really going to limit the ability for pedestrians to walk around the site and really enjoy it. I really think that that's something that I would encourage the applicant to think through and, you know, possibly back off on that limiting factor somewhat. And then lastly, I've mentioned this before, so I won't belate the point, but this is a employment-based mixed, employment-based destination center. And I really don't like the idea that we are losing potentially a third of the potential office that could develop on the site through this. I would look to the applicant to, I like the idea that there's potential increase, but the fact that we are down by a third is definitely concerning. You know, again, given that this is supposed to be employment-centered, so.
Good. Other comments?
I have a ton of questions.
Okay. Questions are good, too.
Okay. So there was discussion of multiple areas where there are private streets. Can you tell us, I saw Dr. Brown talked about the private streets in the utility. Are there also private streets within Pod 1 or 2 or 3?
The Phase 1 development plan, this includes public streets. Duke Health Cary Place has been constructed up to the creek. We don't have, that level of specificity is what's public and what's private isn't delineated in the preliminary development plan. That's something that we work out as we move through development plan. And so we believe it's the applicant's intent to probably do public for all of the streets you see delineated in blue or purple on the PDP. And that the greenish-yellow dots that you see in Pod 3 represent potential private streets. But again, those are details that are not spelled out in the PDP. Those are things that we would normally deal with and address at development plan.
So in the past, we've had a lot of discussions about private streets, and we've had them at this table, right, within developments. Is there a reason why we're not having that part of the discussion now and waiting? Because you, you're well aware of the fact that council's not a big fan of private streets.
I've spent a little bit of time working on public and private street issues.
I know you did.
The issue where private streets are the greatest concern are when they're related to residential.
Sure.
You know, individual property, townhouses, you know, individual lots. As we move into apartments, non-residential developments, it's common to have private streets. As you think about a lot of the shopping centers, commercial areas that offices, you know, those drive-aisles, the internal circulation that you see in their parking lots, those are private. And so it could be that as you move across the stream, you get north of Road, Street D and move into that hospital pod, it's going to have a similar feel. I don't want to suggest anything like a shopping center, but in terms of access and circulation, it could be more of that nature. And so it's, it wouldn't be unfamiliar to staff that, you know, they might be asking to do private streets within the pods.
Right. Yeah, I, my concern just, or associated with the question, is where those private streets might be, especially, you know, there was a comment made that we might not put sidewalks on both sides of private streets. I mean, they're all connected, right? So understanding where the private street helps me understand where the sidewalks may or may not be and how big they are. That kind of specificity would, would help me. I don't know, I don't want to speak for any other councilman.
Can I follow up on your private streets? So I thought one of the other issues with private streets was level of service. So while a pothole might be fine for some people in some municipalities, it's not. And so a private street, we can't control that. So I get the complaints, and then I pass it to you, and there's nothing we can do about it because it's on a private street. That's a concern about private streets because we cannot control the level of service. So anyway.
Yeah, I'm, my only other, well, I have a list of them, but the only ones that not already spoken about by Councilmember Eads, there's a discussion about a reduction in parking going from administratively-approved 15% to 30%. We don't, or I don't have a lot of experience with how many parking spaces for a hospital is the right amount. We've talked agnostium at the table about apartments, but I don't know about hospitals. So is, have we talked about that? Like, we did that with Wake Med, but they already had, they were building more parking spaces because they were running out. Has there been any discussion about what the, or the why associated with 15% to 30% reduction?
Well, as we leave, counsel, as where normally staff can do up to 15%, and then if you want to go above that, up to 30, in this case, you would go to the zoning board of adjustment.
Right.
And so in this case, they have the ability to go up to 30 administratively. However, there are still criteria in the land development ordinance that have to be followed. There's justification that have to be provided, that review and decision-making is handled by staff in this case.
So maybe it's a question for the applicant about why they want, is there something unique about a hospital that would require a 30% parking reduction? Because that seems high to me.
Duke does not want to have a parking problem for its employees, but it was that the studies, the actual studies that were done on healthcare and hospitals were done so long ago, and that even since the pandemic, we have actually seen a 30% reduction in actually parking permits at Duke University Health System. And that there's actually been an 11% decrease in number of gate openings, that we're doing virtual visits and things like that. So we've actually studied our actual usage, which have not caught up in what are the standards that you use for traffic impact analysis and number of parking. So believe me, we're not going to underpark this for our employees because they won't come work for us, which is our biggest risk right now. But we think that the tables are so far outdated now that we'll be able to provide evidence at the time of an application for that next phase of the building of what the numbers need to be.
Great. But thank you. That's really helpful. Is there any perceived, and it's probably a staff question, is there any perceived connection between Pod 1 and Pod 2? I don't see egress or crosswalks or anything connecting Pod 1 and Pod 2 now that there's less streets.
Well, and Pod 1 is currently a construction staging area, has followed the completion of the development of Pod 2. But as development occurs on Pod 1 and development plan, we would look for those connections to be made in the appropriate locations.
So that's not, there are no, on this plan, there, there is no connection, there's no road connection, there's no crosswalks identified, there's nothing between Pod 1 and Pod 2?
On Green Level West, on Green Level West Road, there is a connection right at the top of that. As you.
Right, at the road, but it's pretty, it's pretty deep.
Right. And there are bike paths and sidewalks already built along that road, but there won't be crossing of the, from east to west. There will be likely the tunnel, remember, will have to exit, it's almost a dashed line up there right now. There will actually be a bike path because the tunnel will come out into 2, I mean, into Pod 1, and then that bike path will have to get over to the left side of Pod 1.
So it would be great to have that annotation here because it looks like Pod 1 and Pod 2 are separate. Even though the tunnel goes to Pod 1, there doesn't seem to be a connection except at the street and at the main street. So for instance, if you're, let's say you, you're coming from the hospital and you want to go to that pedestrian hub that's in, at the current building that exists, there's no real.
You would.
You would come down, and there's no crosswalk mid-block, mid, very, very long block. So I just have, I would just have a concern for people, especially crossing two lanes of traffic with two separate bike lanes. It's more of a what's safe and what's not for me. That's just my feedback comments, similar to the way Ryan gave his. So since we're doing kind of questions and comments, the only thing I would add to the great comments made by Councilmember Eads, I have no idea what a kiosk is and why it would be there and what it, I'm not sure I'm supportive of it, but I would love more information about what might be there as we move forward. I really love this, I'm a huge separated bike lane person, so I really like that. Not real thrilled about the removal of the champion trees, but obviously, if you're building a bigger building and a bigger hospital, that's where it needs to go. I also, I don't have any problems with the building transparency. I've been talking to staff about the need for us to shift some of our transparency needs. Anyway, and I don't think you need transparent utility. In fact, given everything that's happened with utilities lately, I'm not sure I want people to be able to look into it either. But just like Councilmember Eads, I'm very concerned about removal of the previous commitment for the extension of the 14-foot wide second westbound lane. And honestly, the removal of some of the plantings. I, I think one of the things I like about the partnerships that we have, like with Duke and several other development, is that we made a commitment, Duke made a commitment, we made a commitment, we came to a compromise, and the best thing about a compromise is nobody was really happy, which meant it was a good compromise. And here we are renegotiating, right, some of the things that we walked away from the table with. And so I see how you're doing more EV and more green, but I would love for you to review what the possibility is of adding affordable housing. If we give you more space and higher density, as you're requesting, I would love to see what the community might give it. That's just me personally.
So can I just clarify? So Duke believes there needs to be the widening of the road to the west of us, but in its unique situation here where all three developers actually got together, did joint TIA's and unique situation here where all three developers actually got together, did joint TIA's and joint assessments of the traffic, and then divvied up which we thought were the most appropriate equitable distribution. So the applicant is actually here, it's the Bel Canto, they have a project before you where it's part of their commitments that they would do that piece. So we tried to divvy up to get all of them done in an equitable way, and we are on, along the same timeline if we can get through the rezoning and stuff.
Understood it. I would rather have redundancy in this by the various developers and ensure that it gets done rather than potentially Bel Canto not making it through. I'd rather ensure that we have the wide lane that was already committed. But this is, I'll let my other council members ask their questions.
Just to clarify, the kiosk, our vision of that is not something we're wed to, but we thought if it was something that would activate an outdoor space like it's a coffee shop, you can actually go get your, walk up to get your coffee and sit down in an outdoor park. We don't actually have an intent, that we have a purpose other than activating a park.
Other questions come in?
As usual, I have questions. I always do. So I just want to make sure I understand that removing of the turn lane condition is simply because one of the partners, Bel Canto, has that responsibility. Do I understand that correctly?
It's actually a through, they have not been approved, so they don't have that responsibility right now, but it's a through lane, not a turn lane.
A through, okay, got it.
It's widening of the Green Level West Road.
Okay.
So let me help, I hope. So, and I'll look at my attorney as it's. So it's possible we could get a condition that says if they don't build it, we will? Okay. I think that's where you were going, Lori.
That's exactly where she was going, and I was thinking that too. And I don't have a ton of other questions. I do have thoughts. I want to say, I'm just going to say this. I love the stormwater mitigation measures and the, what you're proposing is the state of art, state of the art, you know, stormwater and mitigation infrastructure. I do 100% appreciate that there is now a competing kind of set of values between wanting to maintain a canopy and shade and having this green infrastructure. The more I've read about this green infrastructure, the more I understand that, you know, it can be, you know, it's, you sort of pick which one you see as ideal. And I'd love, 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 and I challenge myself to do this as well. I'd like to know how we can do both. State of the art, sometimes it changes from week to month, a year. I think though, in this area, because of what we're building, the stormwater mitigation, it does make sense to prioritize that over, you know, a more, we'll call it, you know, generous canopy. I'm sure there's other ways to provide shade as well. I think I'd be concerned with the height of these buildings about creating, you know, sort of a isolated heat island effect there. But I was just, I was really impressed with the stormwater, the green stormwater proposal in this.
Yes, first, thank you, but we actually would like to achieve both, but maybe not along the tree scape. So if you look in one of your pictures where it showed the ponding here, actually, we would exceed the number of trees in those other areas. It's about where, a little bit to the right of where the number 3 is on this diagram here, along there, just across from the hospital where all those walking paths come together, we envision an open space with a lot of trees here, and you'll see that in one of your pictures, that we still think will exceed the number of, will meet your tree canopy, it just won't be right along the road.
Right, as we're typically seeing it, and I appreciate as well, when I've, I've read about some green stormwater management, and in nature, typically you do have groving and then you have standing water, right? So they do tend to sort of be separated to a certain extent. And I was really, really pleased to see that as well as the, the rooftop gardens, fantastic. I wish we could see scads of rooftop gardens in Cary. I think Jennifer might agree with me on that one, those green roofs. And the energy efficiency too, that's not something that we're seeing, I think enough of, is people making a real effort to have energy efficiency. So I just wanted to not lead with negative and say those things and make sure that I commend the applicant for those. And the only, the only real concern I have is looking at that Street E, going from what appears to be to one way, almost like a, you know, a round street, and then channeling to a different type of street completely. I'm sure nobody's trying to make a terrible bottleneck, but I do have, I just can't picture how that works. Unfortunately, I drive in the roundabouts in downtown Cary a lot, and I can tell you, people struggle when things change and go back and change and go back. And that's really the only big concern I have with what's brought here. I do agree with Lori, you know, affordable housing commitment, particularly for length of time, I think we're seeing a lot more of that, and I'm always happy to hear that in, as a condition and done voluntarily. And really, my only real concern is that, how that street's going to work when it, you know, it's sort of changes from, you know, one area to the other. And I personally, I have no objection to the private street and the utility needs. I think it's, to me, it's fairly reasonable on this site. So I just want to log my lack of objection to that.
Other questions, comments?
Just to piggyback on Carissa's comments regarding the disconnect appears to be between this and the development to the west regarding, I think it was Street E. I trust you guys to handle that and, you know. This has kind of been interesting to hear this, and I mean, even back from 2019 to get to where we are today, you know, we, you know, we have high standards in Cary. I mean, there's no question. Development is not easy in Cary and nor should it be. I mean, we intentionally make it difficult. That ensures quality, ensures that it meets our community's needs and our vision and, you know, adds value. Here we have, you know, one of the greatest hospitals in the region beyond wanting to come to Cary. So we have two greats trying to work together, and I'm optimistic that y'all will, you always do, you know, but like I said, it's not easy. You know, I've heard some things that give me a little pause, but this, it's, it's in the weeds stuff. I'm trying to look at this big picture, you know? You know, the bottom line, do I want to approve a 500-bed hospital? Heck yeah. I do have some concerns about removing a minimum of the amount of office space. I agree with Ryan's comments there. I don't even know that we should have a maximum. If they want to exceed that, by all means. You know, who the heck's going to say no to more office, right? You know, I get the, wanting the security to the north of the site, you know, you want that, yeah, it's your own stuff. People aren't supposed to be back, I get that. Planting things, you don't want them right out there at the doors when people walk out and somebody goes outside to have a smoke and throws it on the ground, because I certainly wouldn't do that. You know, but then, you know, bigger signs, you know, it's like, but does it look good? You know, it's, I don't want to nitpick over 5, 10 square feet or something. I just, I remember back to the work session where we had all three of these projects coming and everybody's working together and everybody's trying to build this comprehensive project and everybody's talking to everybody. So that way, when it's all said and done, it's, you know, all the Ts are crossed, Is dotted and all that stuff. And then it's like, here we are, and there just still seems to be somewhat of a disconnect, you know? So-and-so says they're paying for that road improvement and we're going to do this, but, you know, we kind of have to take worst-case scenario into consideration. What happens if so-and-so goes out of business? It goes bankrupt and they can't complete their development? Well then, you know, who does the road improvement? Town will end up doing the road improvement, which means the taxpayers pay for the road improvement. So, you know? So I, I hope some of these questions that all of us have had up here get kind of worked out by the time this comes back. I look forward to hearing what our planning and zoning board has to say. And then I'd just like us to be all warm and fuzzy when it comes back and we're all good.
Thank you, Mr. France.
I know you'll do that.
Mr. Smith, anything to add?
No, your eloquence of all, everybody is just great. Yeah, it's complicated. Yeah, that's what we do well, so I think we just keep on keeping on and things will happen.
Very well said. This will go to our planning and zoning board for their review and recommendation. They'll be comparing it to the Cary Community Plan. And in the meantime, we are sure that staff will be working with Dr. Brown to see if we can resolve some of the issues, the outstanding issues. So thank you, Mr. Wilson, and all of you who are working on this to help make it come to fruition, we hope. All right, we now move to discussion items. Our first discussion item is the fiscal year 2023-2024 Community Development Block Grant, or commonly called CDBG, Annual Action Plan and Funding Recommendation. And Director of Housing and Community Partnerships, Morgan Mansa, what a title. Will present this item and council may take action. Ms. Mansa.
Thank you all so much. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight's meeting is the final step in approving the fiscal year 2024 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan and Funding Recommendations. This document outlines Cary's housing and community development plans as relates to our annual CDBG funding. The CDBG program provides funds to support viable communities through projects that enable high-quality housing in a suitable living environment for lower-income families. We've been recipients of CDBG funds for close to 15 years and are grateful for the opportunity to invest in organizations and activities that help to make Cary an incredible place to live. HUD has announced that Cary is expected to receive $651,145 for the 2024 fiscal year. Here is the return of the snapshot of where we are in the CDBG Annual Action Plan Timeline. As you can see, we've increased opportunities for public input this year to foster, foster equity and accessibility in the planning process. Since the April public hearing, no additional comments were received. While this is a mandatory public process for CDBG, staff also provided you with a comprehensive list of all eligible activities received during this grant cycle. As you may recall, council chose to set aside American Rescue Plan Act dollars for housing affordability and nonprofits. We still have that funding available along with Cary General Funds and CDBG funds. Next, we'll provide a brief overview of the initiatives under funding consideration this grant cycle. First is the Healthy Homes Cary Program. This initiative provides lower-income homeowners with funding for home improvements, which helps, which help residents age in place, eliminate blight, and improve accessibility for persons with disabilities. This program has become a cornerstone in Cary. It is something that's been adopted by Wake Forest, by Apex, soon to be Morrisville. We are incredibly grateful for your increase in investment from $300,000 to $500,000 and hoping to go beyond to serve more residents to help them stay in their homes. The next activity is to renovate affordable units that are owned by the Carying Place. This organization supports families with children that are experiencing homelessness in their journey to independence and self-sufficiency. The next area is new construction, and we have two proposals. The first is through the White Oak Foundation. These three-bedroom townhome units will enable larger families to have access to affordable homeownership in Cary. Then there is the Beacon Management Multi-Family Development, which is 81 units of affordable housing for senior residents in Cary. Next, we have Public Services, and so this is the White Oak Foundation continuing their incredible program with crisis intervention. We also have Transitions Life Care, which will provide palliative care for Cary residents in their homes and in Cary healthcare facilities. And finally, the Oasis Program, which provides emergency funds to assist with water utility bills. The fourth area is the Nonprofit Capacity Building Program, which is for Dorcas Ministries and rebuilding together. Building on the Cary Nonprofit Capacity Building Program that launched earlier this year, these funds will enable both organizations to renovate office space and therefore serve more Cary clients. We're almost there, y'all. This is, this is a large package, but very exciting. Next is the Cary longstanding facade improvement program, which assists property and business owners to undertake building front improvements. These can range from minor repairs and painting to substantial facade renovations on buildings used for commercial or office purposes. And finally, planning and administration for the CDBG program, which includes materials, trainings, community engagement, and document translations. So following tonight's council meetings, staff will submit the Annual Action Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Following that submission, we will initiate agreements with funding partners and monitor their progress towards the completion of these activities and projects. This concludes my presentation, and I am here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mansa. Opening up to council members for questions, comments, and when you're ready, a motion.
I just want to thank Morgan for the amount of great work. Since you came on staff, you have taken what was, you know, a pretty good program and raised the bar to huge levels. I've been talking to a couple of council members and commissioners outside of our region who all, all know your name and have your housing plan. In fact, they tell me, Apex, I saw Apex last week, Harnett County grabbed it off the web after you presented it to them. They're, you're doing great work, and I think that spreading it from just CDBG money that goes to Habitat, and then now CDBG money goes to the Carying Place to refab houses and rehab them, and now building capacity in our partners, I mean, you're thinking out of the box. It's exactly the Cary way, so I'm just totally impressed with what you've done. So thank you for all of Cary citizens. And I guess with that, I'll make a motion that we accept the 2024 CDBG Annual Action Plan and Funding Recommendations.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion.
Third.
Yeah, I think, I think we all have an insatiable appetite to want more. Appreciate you finding a way to do that. And I don't think you'll ever curb our appetite because we always want more. But it is, as you said, Lori, it's just, you know, we've made leaps and bounds and, you know, very humble for what we're doing, and I'm so glad of all your efforts and your staff's efforts. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I would just like to mention, I'd love to learn more about who Transitions Life Care is serving in our community. So if you could share some contact information with me, that'd be wonderful.
They'll probably give you a tour. I've been a tour.
Yeah, they were, I saw them last week and, and the, just a little personal story, the woman who came and took care of my mom every day in her last days thanked me for what we do.
All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Mansa.
Thank you.
Now go to our second discussion item, Traffic Schedule Updates. Walnut Street and Davis Drive, Traffic Engineer Supervisor David Spencer will present this item and council may take action. Mr. Spencer.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for this opportunity to present a couple of proposed changes to our traffic schedules. I'll be offering two separate requests for consideration tonight. The first is for a speed limit change on Walnut Streets, the second, an expansion of a school's speed zone on Davis Drive. I'll speak on each location in their entirety and then I'll return to talk about next steps for both of them. First up is the speed limit change on Walnut Streets. In August of 2022, North Carolina Department of Transportation staff approached Cary staff about the possibility of reducing the speed limit along most of Walnut Street to 35 miles per hour. The map shown here illustrates the previous and proposed speed limit segments on the corridor. As per our usual approach, a multidisciplinary team was assembled to consider the change. Taking into consideration future traffic volumes, accommodations for all modes of travel in the South Hills and crossroads areas, the impact on congestion due to NCDOT's I-40, 440, U. 440, US-1, and 64 interchange project, and increasing development density along the corridor, Cary staff felt the reduction to 35 miles per hour could be supported. Next is the school's speed zone along Davis Drive. Intersection of Davis Drive and Walderood Boulevard handles much of the school traffic destined for both Davis Drive Elementary and Middle Schools. This includes a high number of students who are pedestrians and cyclists. Citizens have reached out to our transportation engineers to ask what can be done to better protect those students. So Cary and NCDOT staff collaborated to extend the school's speed zone along Davis Drive to include the intersection of Walderood Boulevard. As can be seen on the included map, the current school's speed zone terminates just north of the railroad tracks. The new school zone would end north of Walderood Boulevard, and as is now, the extended area during the drop-off and pickup times, the speed limit would reduce from 45 to 35 miles per hour. Next steps for these requests include modifying the traffic schedules for both new, both of the new speed zones. For Walnut Street, the speed limit signs have already been changed along the corridor by NCDOT. So with the sign change in place, we have been working with NCDOT to update all of our traffic signal designs and our corridor timing plans to accommodate the lower speed. As for Davis Drive, Cary staff will procure the materials and equipment to install the new additional school speed zone flasher on Davis Drive, as well as additional school zone pavement markings. Installation will commence as soon as possible, with plans to have the flasher operational for the commencement of the next school year in August. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Jack, you and I gotta slow down on Walnut now.
I apologize.
Comments or questions?
I've reached the age where they're honking at me. To move faster.
Is this all?
No, I do have a couple of questions. I think when I was reading some of the feedback that you were getting, going back and forth, you know, I think this is kind of an age-old question we have, where we have roads that are designed a certain way, you know, and they're kind of almost intuitive to the speed. You know, they just look like it's safe to go the limits they were. So I do think that we have to put a lot of thought or a lot of watching this carefully about the transition, because a lot of, you know, I can't, I can speak more for Walnut than the other one. But, you know, I think it's, it's an area that will not happen naturally for a lot of people. So I think we have to just be really, you know, I think the signal timing might help a lot, when people start getting the drift about the timing. But I just think how we modify the signage, how we communicate, the things that we have up, I think those are important, because you are starting to get into that big, heavy intersection there, up there by the mall and, you know, Route 1 and 64 and all that. So I think it's more how we communicate and how we let people know about this change.
And to your point, are you planning on putting those temporary speeding things? You know, they flash when you go 35 to let people know they're speeding, and they're like, what?
Yeah, not at the moment.
Okay, I didn't know.
Is this the normal process? I know that, I saw online that there were a number of people complaining, or, well, there's always people complaining, but that Maynard Road might have recently shifted from 45 to 35 in some sections. I don't know if that's the case, but is this normally the process for an NCDOT speed limit change?
For this one, for this, for what happened here, yes, this is how they would handle it. So for this street, since it's in a municipality, if it's posted at something other than 35 miles an hour, there has to be a statute at the state level to do that. Now, they can simply remove it if they want to go to 35, because then it just returns to the statutory speed limit. So that's why they were still able to put the 35 mile an hour speed limit signs up. They didn't need a concurrence from us in order to make that happen.
I see. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or a motion?
I will never make a motion to reduce.
Go get your brand on.
Somebody else.
I'll move to adopt the amendments as presented.
That sounds good. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, discussion.
One thing I do want to add, Mayor, specific to traffic schedule 15, the, taking the school zone northward, I drive that intersection quite a bit, and I can tell you, there's a tremendous amount of pedestrian traffic across that road, and I really feel for that crossing guard that has to walk out into traffic on Davis Drive and stand there with the stop sign. And I think that this one little change is gonna make that person's life a lot easier and a lot safer, so definitely commend you guys for that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Spencer.
Thank you.
Our last discussion item, Cary Apex Water Treatment Facility caustic building upgrade bid awards. Utilities Director Jamie Revels is here with us this evening to present the item, and council may take action. Mr. Revels.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. For your consideration is a bid award for updates to our caustic building at the Cary Apex Water Treatment Facility. This project demonstrates how Cary is investing in our critical infrastructure to serve our community. So the Cary Apex Water Treatment Facility, you know, this is our sole source of drinking water for our service area. It provides high-quality drinking water to approximately 290,000 citizens in Cary, Apex, Morrisville, Wake RTP, and RDU Airport. The facility currently has a rated capacity of 56 million gallons per day. In 2022, the Cary Apex Water Treatment Facility treated and distributed 8.3 billion gallons of drinking water, or approximately 22.7 million gallons per day, for our entire water service area. As we've heard in many recent headlines, aging infrastructure, especially related to water systems, is a major challenge for utilities across the nation, and this project helps to preserve our infrastructure for the future. As you can see from this graphic, our water system maintains many layers of infrastructure, starting from the water plant going all the way through to the fire hydrants. Providing safe and reliable drinking water is really at the heart of what we do, and at the water treatment facility, this is our top priority. Our staff, some of which are included in the pictures you're seeing above, have been recognized nationally for many years as one of the best in the business. So this project includes upgrades to our caustic tanks by replacing them with four new tanks and upgrading the overall storage facility. Caustic provides a very important step as part of pH optimization, which is part of our overall water treatment process. This project will be implemented in phases to ensure continuous service at all times. We did run through a few bid openings on this job, and timing the market is very important. So bids for this project were originally opened in November 2022, after not receiving any bids in October. But in November, we only got two bids. And the bids were higher than anticipated, and there were some complexities with the process. So we decided to go back and repackage the job and put it back out on a more favorable market with a different bid process and different forms. The results were really good as part of that. We got four responsible and responsive bids on the next go-around in April 2023. So our recommendation is, staff recommends rejecting the bids from November 15, 2022, and awarding the base bid received on April 11 to State Utility Contractors, Inc. for $2,538,000. Upon council approval, staff will execute contracts, and construction is anticipated to begin upon delivery of the new tanks, and construction will take approximately 12 months to go through that staged approach. This concludes my presentation, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Revels. Questions for Mr. Revels, or are we ready for a motion?
I'll move that we reject the bids from November 15, 2022, and that we award the bid to the State Utility Contractors for, to $1,538,000.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, discussion.
Just so I'm clear, these new ones will last 20 years?
Yes, that's the lifetime.
Old ones are 20 years old?
I think somewhere in that ballpark. I don't know the exact age on the old ones, but they were starting to show deterioration, so it's time to replace them.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Revels.
Thank you, Council.
We have no closed session and no other business this evening. I declare this meeting adjourned.